Ms. Fazoni, please call roll.
Councilman Register.
Yes ma'am.
Vice Mayor Germain is excused. Councilman Casto?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
And Mayor Tedder.
Yes ma'am. Please rise for the invocation by Pastor Raymond Paul from Beachside.
Let's pray together. Father, we're reminded that you don't give us all the information that we need all the time, but when we call upon you, you do answer us and show us great and mighty things. So Father, we ask for your wisdom today that everything that's decided, everything that's deliberated, that we would make those decisions based on your counsel and the information that we receive from you. Father, we have limited understanding, but you know it all, so in God we trust today. Lord, I ask your blessings on every member of this council, for every city employee, for every elected and appointed official and their families, and Lord, for all of our citizens. Lord God, guide us and direct us, move us forward to your perfect plan and purpose for Panama City Beach, and we give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join Councilman Register for the pledge.
A pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to community announcements. On Saturday, August 23rd, at Conservation Park, there is Metal Madness U.S. Road Running. That is a 5K and a half marathon, wish all the runners good luck. Those things are tough. Our next council meeting will be on Thursday, August 28th, at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall. And right after, well, we'll see right after, we will have Fire Station 31 Open House at noon. So we're very excited for this new fire sta- apparently, it's already been running calls. All right, all right. Running the calls before it's open, impressive. And on Monday, September 1st, City Hall offices are closed in observance of Labor Day. Then on Thursday, September 11th, there will be a Citizens Academy reception here at 4:30, right before the council meeting. Congratulations to all the participants of the Citizens Academy, our first ever Citizens Academy. I know staff did a great job, and we had very active participation from our residents. And then right after that, again, on Thursday, September 11th, there will be a city council meeting here at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. If you recall, we changed the evening meetings to 5:00 p.m. So that'll be at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. Okay? Now we move on to the approval of the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Councilman Register?
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Tedder.
Yes ma'am. Now we move on to the approval of agenda and deletions, because this is a special meeting, but really, aren't they all special meetings? But this is special in a very special sense. Because we moved the ti- or moved the date, there's no additions. So any deletions from the agenda?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Councilman Register?
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Tedder?
Yes ma'am. We now move on to a public comment on the consent agenda and/or non-agenda business. Please come up, state your name. Please keep it limited to city business, and you'll have three minutes. So, any public comment on consent and non-agenda?
Hello, my name is Tudy Lozan. I own at 16701 Front Beach Road, Unit 1102. And the current condition of how, when you drive west to the roundabout, it is so poorly marked that people are going off into the right-hand lane that goes to 79. I've seen several people do that, and then they whip around to do a U-turn, and there has been one accident there. The marking for the lane going west is just a whole lot of barrels with no signage or anything. So, you know, I think that would help. I don't know how long it's gonna take for that mess to be finished, but there is something to look at there. And then also, I would like to address how contracts are done here in the city. In the future, can we write contracts with a clause that we give the vendor a bonus if they actually finish on time? Or if they run over, then they get a deduction in their contract. And then the last thing really that I have to say today is, is there any way we can consider building an amphitheater for Gulf Coast Jam? It is just a nightmare every weekend when it comes, especially for those of us that live right here in the area. I don't have to tell all of y'all. So that's all I've got today, and I thank you for my time.
Thank you, ma'am. Further public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda business? Any further comment? Okay. Seeing none. Mr. Whitman, can you address some things from Mr. Stu?
In reference to the roundabout, that's still under construction. They'll have permanent marking down when they're done with that. I know they had to block that lane once, so they sent everybody up 79 to do a U-turn to come back around. The contracts we already have, incentives if they're done early, and we do have liquidated, 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 damaged, damages if they over, they go over their contract. And I'd love to see a private industry come in and build an amphitheater on private property. We're just out of room on our city property.
Okay, yeah, and I think specifically, Mr. Stu was asking about barrel placement, if that can just be made more clear. Can we check with the contractor?
Yeah, they do an MOT, and we'll make sure they stay the maintenance of traffic, so we'll work with the DRMP and CW Roberts on that.
Okay. And yeah, we do the liquidated damages for contracts that run over. I don't know about bonus for finishing on time. That's kind of the expectation of a contract, that you actually finish on time. But I understand that other municipalities, especially much larger cities, will do bonuses or doing it for finishing early. But we do the liquidated damages for overruns. And the amphitheater, yeah, it's a private industry. We have a lot of space at our parks that is already filled, so building an amphitheater for one event would be a little bit of a challenge, but we encourage private industry to take a look at that. I think it'd be a great addition to the area. Moving on to the consent agenda. Ms. Fazoni?
Resolution 25150, a resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, ratifying and approving utility work order change numbers two through 11 under the city's existing agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation relating to the relocation of utilities on the Florida Department of Transportation widening project on Panama City Beach Parkway between Nautilus Street and Richard Jackson Boulevard, and authorizing execution of change orders for unforeseen conditions.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Councilman Register?
Yes ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Tedder?
Yes ma'am. We now move on to the regular agenda, regular agenda item number one. Mr. Davis?
This is a quasi judicial hearing for you to consider a large conditional use in the 17803 Ashley Drive.
Okay. As Mr. Davis just indicated, this is a hearing to consider approval of a large conditional use application from Ready Mix USA slash SEMEX, Section 50601 of the city's land development code. This is a quasi judicial hearing governed by the city's land development code. This hearing is based on the recommendation of the planning board's approval. Members of the council have been provided a copy of that order for our review. And we will now begin the hearing. Will all persons wishing to speak during this hearing please rise to be sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, now we go on to notice. Mr. Leonard? Give you a second. Were the notice requirements met for this hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. At this time, we will ask each member of the council to make their Jennings disclosures.
Nothing to disclose, Mayor.
Councilmember Coburn?
Nothing to disclose.
Councilman Register?
Nothing.
I have nothing to disclose as well. At this point, at this time, we will hear the staff's report. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a large conditional use, which is over three acres in size, and is considered by not only the planning board who can make your recommendation, but the city council as well. That's why it's here in front of you. The applicant must demonstrate compliance with the general requirements, as well as the specific requirements of the land development code associated with this particular use. Ready Mix USA SEMEX has requested approval of a concrete plant on Ashley Drive in the Commerce Park, and the planning board considered this at their meeting on July 9th, 2025, and recommended approval seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. At this time, we will hear from the applicant. Mr. Carroll, welcome.
Good morning. Robert Carroll, McNeil Carroll Engineering, 1-7-800-PANAMA-CITY-BEECH-PARKWAY. We are the engineer of record representing the applicant. We also have represented the current property owner, whenever he had it, as a crane business. And, this is odd, but I'm also an affected party, because my office is across the street from this, so. But I am here as the applicant, and I have no objection to it. This is located in the Beach Commerce Park, which is an industrial park. It was intended for uses of this nature. There are, there's one in the back of the Commerce Park, there's one across the street from this, and there's one that's behind Ace Home Helpers, which is basically adjacent to it. They enter from 98. So per the land development code, meets all the setbacks, the heights. We notified, because we're just over the three-acre threshold. We had a community meeting, we hosted that. No one in attendance. We came to the planning commission, no one came in attendance. So to date, we have not heard of anyone objecting to this. It's obviously a big need. Panama City Beach continues to grow, and they're ready to operate here in our Commerce Park, and we just respectfully ask for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
At this time, we will hear from any affected party who wishes to speak. Please come up and state your name and address for the record. Any affected party. Seeing none, at this time, we will take public comment. Any public comment? Seeing none. At this time, we will hear any rebuttal by staff, any affected party, or the applicant. Nope, nope. At this time, we'll close the evidentiary portion of the hearing. Moving on to closing arguments. At this time, we will hear closing arguments by staff and the applicant.
Mayor, could I ask that you include all the application materials in the staff report and the record of this hearing?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we will move on to council discussion.
Motion approved.
I actually had a, something I wanted to cover.
Okay.
That's, this is next to the North Vestavia. This was in the packet, but I just wanted to reemphasize that as we go toward the development order phase, seeing if the location of the plant can be moved to the east side of the property to get as much separation as possible from that, from that area, from that neighborhood. And I also saw that the hours of the operation will be evaluated potentially by the planning board, if there's any concern. I think that's good. I mean, it is Commerce Park, there's already a concrete plant there, but it is what, 240 feet or so from that neighborhood, so just make sure we're okay there. And then, Mr. Carroll, I did have a question. For the truck washout and clarifier, could you help me understand how that works for the cement trucks?
Yeah, so the truck backs up, they rinse that out, and it goes through a process and basically water all the materials, kind of a sediment trap, and it catches, by the time it gets to the end, it's clear water, then they reuse that water to continue making it. So it's, it's not that they dump it straight into the city system, it's a reused process. Then, once those materials fill up in there, they pull those materials, they recycle them, and just keep it as a continuous process.
Okay, so that water is clarified, then reused?
Yes, sir. It's used for the operations for washdown and for making the concrete. And just, we are close to the neighborhood, but these are all electric motors, so they're really quiet. This is not the standard, like the old ones that used to be, so they basically can set these up. They shouldn't be real noise creators, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Carroll?
Twenty-foot vegetated buffer.
There's already landscape in there. All that vegetation will remain.
Okay.
And then you've got the right-of-way, and then you've got, St. Joe has office buildings, we have office buildings, and then the neighbors are behind us, and we built our office, we kept a vegetated buffer there as well. So there'll be two series of vegetated buffers.
Okay. I think it's consistent with the area, and I approved the other ones on my time with the planning board, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
A question?
Yeah.
The, if we could bring the map up for a minute, again, where is the existing concrete plant on the map?
I spoke too soon, Mr. Carroll.
So you see in the red, that's where we're proposed to go.
Correct.
And then on the north, kind of to the right, is where the existing concrete is. Yep, to the, yep, right there. And then there's another one, if you'll pull it down, right there, there's the next one, down a little bit more, it's right up. Yeah, right there's one, and then way in the back part of the Commerce Park, it's not on this map. It's the one that was just recently approved.
Okay, I was just thinking about the truck traffic that's going through there. Will there be enough separation there so it shouldn't impact overall?
Yes, ma'am.
Too terribly?
There's still vacant lots in the Commerce Park to be developed as well.
Okay. All right. I just was wondering how it was all gonna interconnect as far as transportation?
Yeah, it's pretty minimal. They make their concrete, then they go out on the job site, and they're there for a while. You know, they have three or four trucks in a row as they do pours, so it's not a continuous truck operation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We're good for Mr. Carroll? We can ask him to stand up one more time, I guess.
We want to wait till he sits down.
Yeah.
Make him earn his money today.
Okay, we have, we have a standing motion.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Councilman Register?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Tedder?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Congratulations. Okay, we now move on to regular agenda item number two, ordinance number 1666. Mr. Davis?
In ordinance of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 25 of the city's Code of Ordinances related to code enforcement, repealing all ordinances in conflict providing for separability, scrivener's errors, liberal interpretation, modifications, codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, we will now accept public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on ordinance number 1666? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Davis, can you help us understand this adjustment?
Yes, sir. This is primarily a housekeeping ordinance based on some issues that we've had, both correcting typos or grammatical issues. The primarily two issues that we're addressing in this is repeat violations and warning notices under our code enforcement system, which is fairly unique in the state. We provide a warning notice to each correctable violation, and that warning notice is typically sent by certified mail. There are sometimes some issues with sending certified mail. We have clarified that to require first-class mail and posting on the property as another means of providing that warning notice. There are no penalties that attach to that warning notice. They have a period of correction, and then if they don't correct by the time prescribed in the warning notice, then they would receive a citation, which is sent by certified mail, and if we can't prove, if we can't perfect the certified mail, it will be posted on the door or hand delivery. And then the other thing that we're doing is we're dealing with repeat violations. So repeat violations have been a bit of a challenge because of the two-step system that we have adopted, and so what we've done is that there is no warning notice required if you've received two warning notices in the last year for the same violation, because what we have is we have some habitual offenders that are never reaching the repeat violation stage, because they correct potentially just in time, or, you know, after a period of time. And so there's been a bit of a drag in that process, and so what we did is we looked at what other cities and actually the state statute does, and they do this exact same, this exact same language, borrowed from Chapter 162 in the state statute. So it basically just makes the enforcement process a little bit more efficient.
Okay, so they're two of the same notices for, to the exact same, if they've received two of the exact same notices in the previous year, warnings.
Correct.
So it's not damaged fence, tall grass, and then abandoned vehicle?
Correct.
It'd be two abandoned vehicles, and then on the third, okay?
Yes, sir.
And this isn't liable, what the state's doing?
On the repeat violation thing, we fixed that issue based on looking at what the state statute had done to address the exact same issue.
Okay.
Okay. And so, and for the warning notices, those will, instead of being certified mail, those could be first-class mail now?
First-class mail, and they'll be posted on the property itself.
Okay.
And the reason we do that, so you know, is sometimes homeowners may not be, live in that property, or they may not be present in that property, and so we make sure that the owner and the resident both get notice.
Okay.
What's the definition of an abandoned vehicle?
I would have to get back to you on that. I mean, it's, the way we handle it is if the, if it's clearly inoperable, if it's rusted, if it has an expired tag, but clearly inoperable is the real language that we look at when we look at abandoned vehicle. If it has no evidence of having moved in so much time.
If it, if it has a registered tag, but no engine, and they just keep renewing the tag on it, it's sitting there?
We would still consider that a junk vehicle if it's clearly inoperable.
That would be an abandoned vehicle?
Well, what we call them is junk vehicles, not abandoned vehicles, but yes.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Further discussion from council?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Councilman Register?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Tedder?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, tidying some, just tidying some things up there. All right, we now move to regular agenda item number three, Resolution 25151. Mr. Davis?
A resolution of the City of Panama City Beach, Florida, approving a task order with DRMP Inc. for CRA program management services for the period from July 1st, 2025, through September 30, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,737,435.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any public comment for this item? Any public comment? Mr. Dare, could you help, seeing none, Mr. Dare, could you help us understand this item?
Yes, sir. John Adair Public Works. So back in May, this council originally approved a three-month task order for DRMP for, to manage the CRA program, and since that time, they have done a fantastic job. Evidence of that can, you know, just outside this door. We've made substantial progress in these last three months. What this contract that is before you is to extend to the end of September, and then a year beyond that. So the idea would be to make it align with our fiscal year for budgeting purposes.
Okay, and so we had DRMP get in, I wouldn't say last minute, but they came on the job pretty quickly.
Yes, sir. They came in, hit the ground running, and they've done a fantastic job. Jason Crenshaw with DRMP is here. If you have any questions for them, you know, to answer, but they've been invaluable. They've brought a whole team to help with it, and it's really paying off.
Okay.
John, can you speak to the history DRMP has with the CRA?
I can let Jason do that, because he's much more familiar with the history.
I have a little bit of familiarity with the DRMP's history. I personally have only been with DRMP a little bit over a year and a half. Back when the CRA was originated, DRMP was there to help formulate the CRA, some of the initiatives that were part of it. So they were part of the CRA program some 10, 15 years ago.
Okay. And how are we doing on segment three?
Segment three is coming along. Last week, actually two weeks ago, we did a final walkthrough inspection of the west part of Front Beach Road, and on State Route 79 Arnold, we identified some deficiencies, minor deficiencies, little cracks in sidewalks, things like that, that they'll have to fix before we quote-unquote do a final approval of those two segments. We're hoping by the time they get that punch list done, they'll be ready to start paving on the east end of the roundabout. They're getting real close, doing some median work in there. They did have some weather setbacks, delays. They were hoping to have the majority of that work completed, hopefully before September 1st, but I think with the delays, it's gonna extend beyond that, so we're still hoping mid, late, late fall at this point. There'll be some ongoing work, just so you are aware, that's the main contractor getting out of the way. Then we'll move on to the utilities, coming off the utility poles. Still have a lot of utility work, pulling those poles out, coming back, redoing sidewalk, some minor cleanup along the way as we move forward.
Yeah, but you're focusing on getting the road open.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Do you foresee any additional challenges other than weather for the surface on the east end?
Not at this time, though, sir. But it is construction, so anything can pop up any day now, but I do not foresee anything as of right now.
Yeah, two weeks of rain.
That's right. Major storm, there is a hurricane out that was out there now. I don't think it's gonna come this way, but, you know, we keep an eye on things like that as well, so.
Okay, and then for the temporary barriers, we had a public comment earlier about the temporary barriers.
Yeah, if the bomb goes, I'll swing by there, right after this meeting, take a look at that setup. They did have some temporary barriers in place. I have not seen any issues personally with traffic navigating those. You know, people out of town, maybe they're not familiar with the roundabout setup, just people unaware of it, things of that nature still, so you're still gonna encounter that, but we will take a look at the MOT setup, make sure it's appropriate.
Oh, I mean, I saw someone go the wrong way down the roundabouts.
Oh, yeah.
From the west end. I don't know what made them think they should go drive on the wrong side of the road to enter that one roundabout. Maybe it's the first one they've ever seen in their life.
There was also a comment she made about incentives. This contract actually had, excuse me, incentives built in to finish early, just weren't accomplished within that timeframe, so.
Okay.
Yes, Jason, I had the opportunity to work with Ben Faust.
Yes, sir.
Back years ago, when the CRA first started, and he always did us a good job and had a good team. I think, you know, hindsight's always got 20/20 vision, but.
Yes, sir.
You guys were given some bad direction back then, in my opinion. I think at the time, they thought it was the right decision to move down here to the west end and start meeting in the middle, but looking back at it, I think if we'd have just did Front Beach Road and we would have been finished with it by now, and not, you know, jumped down here, so. But I'm looking forward to working with you guys, but I want you guys to know I'm gonna be watching y'all this next year.
Yes, sir.
Because it's coming up again in September.
Yes, sir.
And I personally expect you guys and our staff to bid out 4-1 and 4-2 this year. We've been working on it for a couple of years, so.
We're making progress.
About ready to go, so.
Yes, sir. We're making progress. We have a submittal from Dewberry coming very shortly and towards the beginning of September for final plans. We need to take a real hard look at those plans and specs before they go out to bid, just to make sure everything is in order.
Okay, well, looking forward to working with you guys.
Glad to be here. Thank you for the opportunity.
We will be watching you this next year.
Yes, sir. I'll be expecting it.
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, yeah, very excited to get segment three done, and as. Yeah, yeah, very excited to get segment three done, and as Councilman Casto indicated, getting 4-1, 4-2 rolling, I know you guys are taking an additional look on those plans just to make sure that they will be easy to be constructed, as easy as possible when working on the major tourist corridor.
Yeah, we're waiting on those final plans to be submitted before we take that look into them, and we're also looking and exploring alternative bid methods potentially as well. That may be a financial benefit to the city. There's CM at risk, there's progressive design build, traditional design build, alternatives that we can explore. Could look at maybe getting multiple contractors on, onboard as well, so just a variety of different things that we can evaluate to kind of help speed up that, that process, and bring that, those construction costs down as well.
Okay. Further discussion?
Just like to ask about signage, are we going to be putting some more signage down on the roundabout? There seems to be a lot of confusion.
On the east end of the roundabout, all the signage is not there. I think the majority of the signage on the west side is in, I think there were a few missing signs that we notated that will go in as part of their punch list, but the majority of them on the west side and on, on State Route 79 is there. Some of the signage is currently missing on that east side until they get everything into its final configuration.
Okay.
It sounds to me that, from Councilmember Coburn's comment, and lady in the audience, that we need to put a sense of urgency on the signage, so if we can move that along and get those to be a priority, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
But like Paul Casto said, we'll be watching, man, we've got sky-high expectations. We've been, we've been beat up enough up, up here, so we want to, you know, monkey's on your back now a little bit here, so we want to make sure you guys do a great job. I know you will.
I've ran the circus before, so it's not, it's not my first rodeo, but?
And I think it's important that you guys and the city knows that you guys have a history with the CRA, and that's, that's part of the decision that our city manager, Mr. Whitman, and their team has made to choose to bring you guys to the table, and I think that's important for our city to know that you guys know where we've been, you understand, you have a sense of understanding, so we can, my expectation is for us to move a lot more fluidly through this next segment.
We're invested in the city as well, just, we have people who live and work and play here, just like your community does, so we have a vested interest in seeing these projects be successful as well.
That's fantastic.
Well, you, you came in, you made rapid progress since you've come in, keep up that velocity.
So it's, it's a big program, it's a lot of work, I can tell you that, so we do have a lot of work ahead of us, and it's going to take us some time to, to catch up to the point to where we are familiar with every single project that the CRA has. We've been primarily focused on segment three and its construction progress, 4-1, 4-2, then we got 4-3, and then a lot of other CRA projects that we barely even touched the surface on them yet, so.
We just want it all we're in.
I understand.
We're not asking for much.
Yeah, well, segment three, three first.
It's a magic wand, right? Make it all better.
If you have the money, we can make it work.
We're spending a lot of money.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Further discussion from the council, or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Fazoni?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Casto?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Coburn?
Yes.
Mayor Teddermer?
Yes, ma'am. We now move on to the city manager's report.
As you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we didn't get our CO for Fire Station 31, they're moving in now, they will start taking calls out of there, and we'll have the grand open, opening after our next council meeting at 12 o'clock.
Okay, looking forward to that. See your attorney report.
I just wanted to give you guys an update, over the past probably six, nine months, you guys have emphasized us working hard to pursue damages against contractors that damage our, our utility lines, and throughout the construction. We have continued to pursue that, just in last week, we settled over $100,000 in claims, where, where the contractors will be paying us back money for damages they caused, and we'll be bringing an ordinance back to you to tighten some of our right-of-way regulations as well, so a lot of the things that you guys tell us to do all happen in the background, but that doesn't mean that they're not happening, so I just wanted to give you guys that update.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, just creating an incentive for those contractors to look twice before they drill.
And, and I will tell you, Mr. Adair has done a very good job of, of tightening the reins on, on those contractors, so we've seen less claims, which is obviously the ideal.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, council comments?
Nothing from me, mayor.
Councilman Register?
Just want to thank the police and fire department for being out there, there's kids going back to school this week, I know it was really exciting to see, my kids love seeing all, all the presents out there, and those guys passing out welcome back bags and everything, it was a really, really nice touch for the kids, so appreciate y'all's presence, so thank y'all very much for doing that and being there, kids really enjoy it, so thank y'all.
Nothing today, thank you.
Yeah, second, I guess this is the only time I can do that, second, Mr., our councilman